Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you to the Village Board and our department heads. We appreciate it. As always, the video of this meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and will also be available on Facebook and posted to the Village website. At this time, I would call the meeting to order and ask our deputy clerk Charity Jones to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Kateneck.
Here.
Trustee McGee.
Here.
Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
And President Kukler.
Here. And Clerk Saladino is vacationing and hopefully having a wonderful time. I think he'll be back at the next meeting, but at this time, I'd ask you to stand and have the deputy clerk lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one which under us invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Today was a very sad day for the village. Jerry Kalula, known as J.C., a member of our Public Works staff, passed away, and today was his funeral. J.C. touched all the residents in many ways, the business owners, but really, the village staff. He was the one that the village would call on to make the repairs, to keep everything running, and he just was fantastic at his job because of his skills, because of his personality. So I would ask to join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of J.C. Thank you. A little bit more about J.C. J.C. worked for the Department of Public Works for 15 years and was beloved by many. He served with distinction and was among the very best performing all manners of duties. He established himself as a highly skilled tradesperson and the go-to person throughout the village. Over the last 10 years, J.C. has been an integral part of our Streetlight Municipal Buildings Division, where he would routinely come into work very early in the mornings to check for outages and stay late into the evening to take care of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems in all of our municipal buildings. J.C. was also integral in the village's transition to a modernized pump station for drinking water, establishing himself as an expert in the operations of a highly complicated system and took on responsibility for ensuring safe drinking water for the village water customers. He also was a keeper of the village fountain, and we will always look upon it and reflect fondly on his commitment, work ethic, positive attitude, and fun-loving nature. J.C.'s character and values will be sorely missed, yet they will live on with the legacy he leaves behind. We share our sincerest condolences with his wife Maria, their children, the rest of the family and friends. We thank him for his outstanding service and commitment to the village of LaGrange, and may we all seek to embody his upbeat and good nature. Rest in peace, J.C. Moving on, stormwater. In the news regarding the village's litigation, the Hanson Quarry closing arguments concluded today. I see Dan Stanner, our lead trial attorney, in the audience, and I know he will, in a few minutes, address the public here. But on behalf of the Village Board, Dan, thank you for the great job litigating on behalf of the residents' interests. We appreciate it. The closing arguments went, I think, longer than everybody expected. They started on Friday and concluded today. The judge allowed the parties two weeks to submit any final briefs and then two weeks to respond to the other side's briefs. He indicated that he would be ruling and writing prior to March 9th and continued the matter for March 9th, approximately 60 days from today. So we're anxious for his ruling. We do appreciate the amount of time he took. It was apparent that he really looked at the evidence, studied the law, asked very probing questions of both sides. And again, as just an observer, I think that we presented a great case, and hopefully the judge agrees. This, obviously, the trial is just one of several efforts that are ongoing, where the village is working with elected leaders and partner agencies like the MWRD, the Illinois Department of Transportation in Cook County, to implement regional storm sewers to address concerns brought to us by the residents. Very recently, we asked Congressman Caston and Congressman Chewie Garcia to write letters in support of grant funding that we're obtaining or attempting to obtain, and their offices expressed an absolute willingness to help in any way they can. In that kind of similar vein, Congressman Caston wants to have his first town hall in his district for 2023, and the Village Hall on Saturday, January 21. So we are going to host Congressman Caston here on January 21, and feel free to come out and ask the congressman what he's doing for LaGrange, and I know that he's working hard on our behalf. So that's fantastic. We're also going to be, in early 2023, with the thought of winning the litigation, meeting with the engineers to decide what's going to be the best course of action as far as planning the storm sewer down 50th Street, the laterals, whether there will be any internal within LaGrange detention, temporary, I would assume, and then again, all draining into the quarry through a 54-inch pipe. North of 47th Street, we're going to be looking and retaining engineers to do the first phase of the study of the north of 47th Street. And that first phase is going to involve mapping out where the depressional areas are and a preliminary idea of the best way to address the most houses in the depressional area, similar to what we did south of 47th when they came up with the 50th Street storm sewer and the laterals. Okay? These houses will be impacted, and we can look at phases and things of that nature. From prior studies, it is expected that the engineers will conclude that the Mars project is most likely the avenue that the village should proceed with first, but again, we'll be looking at our experts to confirm that, to study that, and then to explain the pros and cons of the different systems so that the board and boards in the future can make educated decisions. And I expect that that will be occurring again, or at least starting up in the first On Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and our village, with our race diversity group and our other groups that are very active in promoting cultural awareness, promoting equity, promoting inclusiveness, have events planned. The first event that I'm aware of starts on Sunday, January 15th, at 3:00 p.m. at Nazareth. It's discussing the film Montgomery to Memphis, a film record documenting the life and work of Martin Luther King Jr. and his nonviolent campaign for racial equity and social justice. And I know that Trustee McGee and her husband Maurice are active in that event. We also are going to have, or LaGrange is having, the community celebration on Monday, January 16th, at the First Baptist Church of LaGrange, 20 North Ashland. Trustee McGee, when she's there, wears the hat of Reverend McGee, along with her husband, Reverend Maurice McGee, as I believe is the title pastor, Trustee McGee?
I'm sorry?
When you're at the church, is your title pastor, or what's your title?
We're pastors.
Pastors, Pastor McGee. And so they're hosting this event again, honoring the life and legacy of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. It starts at 10 o'clock. Doors open at 9:00. Keynote speaker, Reverend Dr. E.L. Branch, and Trustee McGee, if you want to give any more insight onto that, please feel free.
Thank you, Brother President. This is the first time in four years Sister Becky in the audience, she's a part of the Commemorative Committee in LaGrange. We've been doing this for several years. We've been off for the past four years. I think 2018 was our last gathering. And what we do is we try to bring awareness to the community about the things that Dr. King stood for and as well as try to engage our youth and young people in activities that are done across the nation to recognize Dr. King and the things that he stood for. So this year, the theme is "It Starts With Me." And it starts with me. We're trying to teach people to develop the mindset, or beloved mindset, in the community for injustices and things that you can do to start to make a change in your community. And so it will kick off with the movie at Nazareth Academy. It's shown in the auditorium. The doors open at 2:30 p.m. And then the next morning, the doors open at 9:00 a.m. at the church, and we will start at 10:00 a.m. with a community breakfast and prayers by the different clergy in our community, as well as we have clergy from Chicago, Bolingbrook, surrounding areas, and we offer prayers, and we have a keynote speaker and just fellowship as a community and talk about how we can keep his legacy alive. So everyone is invited. It's a wonderful time, right, Becky?
Again, everyone's invited and complimentary breakfast, so a lot of reasons. Trustee McGee is cooking, so a lot of reasons to go. Thank you. As you know, last meeting, we recognized the retirement of Chief Terry Vavre. His last day was Friday, December 28th, and on Monday, we had interim chief John Buckley started, and we appreciate Chief Buckley coming and giving his talents. I'll be talking a little bit about that, or somebody will, when he's officially sworn in as part of the meeting, but I want to recognize our firefighters that are here tonight. We appreciate you coming out. We appreciate interim chief Buckley for coming in. We also, this last weekend, I know that the testing went well, so the department's looking good, working hard, and protecting all the residents and businesses, and we appreciate that. The Police Department, not to be undone, has, Police Chief Warlov has named Sergeant Ken Uier to be the deputy chief. So that recommendation will go before the BOPC, the Board of Police Commissioners, and assuming they agree, he will then be sworn in as our deputy chief, which is fantastic and moving, again, the department along in the right direction. Again, because everybody wants to keep up with their neighbors, our administrative staff is in the process of recruiting an HR manager, and we've already received some excellent resumes, but we're spreading the word that we are hiring an HR manager, and if anybody's interested, please contact Village Manager Knight for application or information. I think it's also on our webpage. So feel free to apply, and we're looking forward to tightening up the HR department skills, and we appreciate also Charity Jones and all her efforts in that regard. Before I end, kind of, as a father of four, I understand teenagers and poor judgments and mistakes, but there's been happening a little more than we want in our village a couple of weeks ago, and it seemed like perhaps they were even older kids, more college-age than high school age, knocking over several garbage cans on their way to or from a party or perhaps an establishment in countryside, but it's problematic. It's tough for the residents that wake up at 3:00 in the morning hearing garbage being kicked over. The whatever neighbor, and I know Trustee O'Brien was one of the neighbors that woke up early to clean up the blocks, it's unfortunate. There's ring doorbells. You are seen. I think at this time, you may even have been questioned by the police. If you were, your denials were kind of not necessarily taken all that seriously. Hopefully, it was a warning, and it won't happen. Unfortunately, this morning, Public Works, as they started again, a tough day for them to have graffiti out in front of the Verizon store. It takes staff resources to have that removed. Obviously, we're not going to tolerate having graffiti up, so it's one of those things that resources are taken away from other things to deal with. There's cameras throughout downtown. It's not a very smart thing to do. It's obviously destructive. So if you're listening to this, I'm sure it's not your children, but if you could talk to your children and tell them to talk to their friends, that sooner or later, people are going to get caught, and when they call and say, "Well, it's my son or daughter's first time," we're going to be fed up, and there's going to have to be consequences. So let me end, and maybe it'll be over. Thanks. So with that, I would ask if there's a Village Manager report.
There is, and thank you, President Kukler, and good evening, everyone. Just a couple of brief announcements. The Cosette School Public Parking Pilot Program just concluded at the end of December. As the board will call, School District 102 allowed public parking on the Cosette School blacktop from Friday to Sunday evenings during the month of December. Under the program, public parking signs were placed near Madison and Ashland entrances. A sign was also placed at the Madison and Cosette intersection to direct motorists to the additional parking area. As part of the program, Police Department staff routinely evaluated parking conditions over the course of the program. Use of the law will be further analyzed. However, we are pleased to report that there was no illegal overnight parking. Information gathered during this program, like I said, will be evaluated, and we'll use that to evaluate future parking management strategies. Program was a collaborative effort by staff in several village departments, and I'd like to thank them all for their efforts. Just a couple of notes on upcoming meetings. We have the Fire Pension Board meets tomorrow, January 10th, at 8:00 a.m. The meeting will take place at the fire station, which is located at 300 West Burlington Avenue. Plan and Commission meets tomorrow on the January 10th as well, at 7:30 p.m. here in this auditorium, located at 53 South LaGrange Road. Design Review Commission meets Wednesday, January 11th, at 7:30 p.m. also here in this auditorium. Lastly, just a reminder on holiday recycling. This is the last week the residents can have their holiday tree picked up curbside. As a friendly reminder, all ornaments, tinsel, and lights should be removed prior to placing the tree out for collection, and no stickers are required. Lastly, just a quick reminder, as you're pulling down the trees and either storing them away or getting them ready for a curbside collection, holiday lights may be recycled in seven receptacles located in LaGrange, LaGrange Park, including the Village Hall lower level lobby, LaGrange Park Village Hall, LaGrange Parking Garage, LaGrange Public Library, and the Park District of LaGrange. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Village Manager Knight. And let me just follow up with Director Public Works, Colby. On the pickup of the Christmas trees, is that done by village staff?
President Kukler, that is done by flood brothers.
Okay, thank you. And I will continue on. We have two appointments or swearing ends. First is the appointment for Zoning Board of Appeals. With the resignation of Commissioner Kate Hennessy, a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals exists. To fill this vacancy, I submit for your consideration and consent the appointment of Matthew Thomas Dattilo for a term to expire in 2024. Mr. Dattilo resides at 740 South Edgewood Lane and has graciously indicated his willingness to serve the Zoning Board of Appeals. Matt, if you could just come to the podium, introduce yourself. We won't ask any tough questions, but just so any of the trustees that don't know you can see you, and if they do have any questions. But I do seek the consent to appoint Mr. Dattilo and would ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustees. Any questions? Seeing none, is that a roll call or voice vote? Okay, we will just do a voice vote, but Deputy Clerk Jones, you can do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And of course, our own. Matt, thanks for your willingness to serve. We know you'll make a great addition. We appreciate it and look forward to seeing how you work.
Thank you, President.
Thank you. Next up, we have the oath for interim chief John Buckley. With Chief Terry Vavre's retirement, John, formerly of the Pleasant View Fire Protection District, has been identified as the interim fire chief. Mr. Buckley was recently identified as a candidate who would best meet the village's need as an interim fire chief and was appointed on December 12th of 2022. Interim chief Buckley will work closely with all members of the Fire Department to coordinate fire department activities while the Administration Department conducts a search for a candidate to serve as permanent fire chief. By the way of providing some background, interim chief Buckley possesses excellent qualifications and demonstrated excellent leadership over the course of his career. He has over 33 years of experience in the fire service and has held positions of deputy fire chief and fire chief chief administrator for the Pleasant View Fire Protection District. As interim chief services will be provided through an independent contractor agreement with Mr. Buckley, this is a temporary appointment. The agreement extends to June 30th, 2023, with some flexibility afforded through the terms of the agreement. At this time, I would ask Deputy Village Clerk Charity Jones to swear in or administer
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Buckley.
Aye, John Buckley.
Having been appointed to the office of interim fire chief.
Having been appointed to the office of interim fire chief.
In the village of LaGrange, in the county of Cook.
In the village of LaGrange, in the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of interim fire chief.
The duties of the office of interim fire chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Chief, thanks again for your willingness to serve. Men of the Fire Department, thank you, as always, for your fine professional service and willingness to protect us. We do appreciate it. At this time, I would ask the deputy clerk to read the items on the consent portion, followed by the items under current business.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they have already been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, Agreement, Engineering Services, 2022-23 Sewer System Rehabilitation Project. Item B, Award of Contract, 2023 and 2024 Tree Maintenance Program.
And that passes unanimously. As indicated, there's no current business, so I will open it to public comments. After any public comments, then I'll invite trial attorney Dan Stanner up to the podium to update us regarding the litigation and the conclusion of the closing arguments. So this evening, if there's, Becky, if you want to be first, any public comments from matters not on tonight's agenda?
Okay, hello, everybody. I'm Becky Lorenson, 103 East Cossett, from Community Diversity. I just, this is just a matter of awareness, just so you are aware. Community Diversity Group, for a while, has been working on a project to put a mosaic on the community center over at 200 Washington. We just met with the park district tonight, and there, we are doing the project with Community Diversity, offering it as a gift to the park district. So we're going to be starting to do some fundraising efforts in the next few weeks. We're still finalizing our materials, but I wanted to just give you a sneak preview that this is coming up. It's going to be a community building project. We're going to be working with Green Star, which is a group that works with groups like ours, and they've done a lot of murals and mosaic arts and other things in Chicago. And we are going to be approaching businesses and individuals. Our fundraising goal is around $40,000 to $50,000. And we look forward to working with the community to do the design, where we'll be inviting representatives of different groups. Also, when we do the actual laying of the tiles, we'll be inviting people of all over different age groups, different churches, different religions, different races, try to get people coming together who may not otherwise come together. So just a sneak preview, watch for more info. Thank you.
Thank you. What a great idea, and we, of course, wish you all the success and look forward to seeing as it develops. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. Laura West, 140 Sunset. I think we've learned a lot about stormwater and the timeline of projects and the intensity of what needs to be done to address these issues, a lot of which have been discussed tonight. I think one thing that everyone can agree on is the trial is, takes a very long time, a much slower timeframe than we have originally thought. Mars 2029 is a far time away, very slow, long timeframe. The storms and the water issues are moving in the complete opposite direction. The intensity, the severity, the impact is only getting stronger and worse. My corner Sunset now is deeply impacted, as everybody knows, north of 47th, deeply impacted. I am very encouraged to hear the commitment to a study first quarter of '23 to look at this area in more detail and address it. And I really look forward to hearing more ideas and results from that, and also hope that there's some more immediate, short-term plans to provide some relief. The residents are counting on the village staff and the board, and we appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just have a real brief comment. Brian Murray, 124 South Wayola. We've been in this home for about seven years now. When we bought it, we knew it had a very awkward garage that's placed with a 90-degree bend in the driveway, which resulted in our backyard being entirely paved over. We're now finally in a position to fix this and move it so we could drive straight into it and put some nice grass in. But we've run into procedural problems. While the prior garage was built with a permit, the prior owner did not get a variance. And now we're being told we can't even apply for a variance. It would result in building coverage in excess of what could even possibly be approved. Because this condition has already existed, I'm asking the board to consider amending the code to allow the board to recommend variances that essentially just don't make anything worse. Things will get better or stay the same. And if that's something the trustees would consider, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that we were provided a memo with some options, and I guess would be the best that we consider this at a later date, or, yes? Okay. So the board was provided this evening some options that hopefully will be available to try to remedy the situation. Again, for the people at home, it's my understanding that this reconfiguration will actually have less concrete involved, make it safer to enter and exit the garage, be better for flood control and that things. Obviously, the code is written generally and can't adapt for every instance. So we just have to look at, and staff will continue to work with you on trying to figure out a remedy to the situation. So thank you for coming tonight. And seeing no others, I would invite trial attorney Dan Stanner up to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board and President Kukler. My name's Dan Stanner. I served as the village's trial attorney for the lawsuit initially filed by the quarry to stop the 50th Street Storm Sewer Project. We tried the case over about two and a half weeks in late 2021. We were originally scheduled for closing arguments on December 22. The arctic blast that we had came, that came down compelled the judge to move it to last Friday. I can report without getting into too much legal advice that we were happy with the way the evidence went in at the trial. I think that we marshaled a very strong case to show not only that the village has and had an easement, but that the quarry knew all about it before they cut the village's pipe. And they intentionally interfered with the easement. The argument that we made to the court was that they did it because they wanted to start mining out the land underneath it and get all of the revenue and profits that came with it. We started our closing argument last Friday. The judge had to leave at 12:30. He offered to come back on a Saturday, which is a sign of how seriously he takes this lawsuit. We then showed up on Monday, today, to complete the arguments. As I said, I'm very happy with the arguments we were able to develop. I felt that Judge Cohen was very receptive. I also believe that the judge was quite skeptical of the central argument that the quarry is offering, which is, in the quarry's view, that in 1992, the village somehow agreed to never put more water into the quarry. And so when we developed the 50th Street Storm Sewer Project, that was a violation of this alleged agreement. It's safe to say the judge is extremely skeptical of an argument that the village ever tied its hands like that in the future. So as President Kukler said, the judge indicated that we should all come back on March 9. He expects to have a written ruling prior to March 9, so we could get it at any time. He did give me the opportunity to submit additional authority in two weeks. If I do that, the quarry can respond in two weeks. I'm not even sure that we're going to need to submit any additional authority, but I did want to take the time to look at the record and make sure there weren't any arguments that we haven't thoroughly addressed. So fingers crossed, we should have a favorable ruling, hopefully sometime in February, or at least sometime on or before March 9.
Thank you, Dan. We're going to go into closed session, so I won't ask the trustees if they have any questions of you now. So I appreciate you giving the update. I know a lot of our trustees, the attorneys made arrangements to have the trial and closing arguments livestreamed. So a lot of the department heads, the board, as well as many of our residents took advantage and watched the closing argument. So I appreciate that that was made available to us. I will just say publicly that it was hard to hear the quarry's attorney talk about how unfair and upsetting it was, the thought that the quarry might have to take some water in, knowing that our residents for years have put up with ruined and flooded basements, lost possessions, have nightmares that have been expressed at this dais about the flooding. And really, the comments just seem so tone deaf by opposing counsel that I'm sure that the residents that put up with the flooding had to be just sickened by those comments. But hopefully, the judge will rule our way, and we'll be moving towards resolution soon. So thank you for the update.
Sure.
At this time, I would ask if there's any trustee comments. Seeing none, we are going into closed session, or we will be asking for a motion to go into closed session. The closed session under Section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, Section 2C11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss pending probable or imminent litigation, and under Section 2C21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Again, it is our intention, or the board's intention, to meet in closed session. We will adjourn to closed session and immediately will not, the board will not reconvene to open session, as no formal action will occur during the closed session. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into closed session and a second.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Maybe Deputy Clerk Jones will help me out there.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Kateneck.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Again, we will be meeting back here in two weeks. I appreciate everybody coming out.